We'll call this meeting to order to the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for May 10th, 2022. Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Leyland.
Here.
Little. Schwartz.
Here.
Tralka.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions for the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is a recognition of national public health accreditation achievement by Blackhawk County Health Department.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Board. This is so exciting, and I want to, I'll just read the comments from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Center for Disease Control and Prevention. It's to Dr. Ebony, and it says, "On behalf of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, we are pleased to congratulate the Blackhawk County Health Department on its accreditation by the Public Health Accreditation Board. Your national accreditation status lets your partners and community know that your organization meets national standards and provides services that all residents should come to expect from their health departments. Moreover, because the national accreditation program seeks to improve the quality and performance of all health departments, your participation in this program indicates your commitment to the continuous improvement of your health department's services." And so, they were, thought it was an impressive achievement, and they recognized the time and the efforts of the leaders and the staff at the Blackhawk County Board of Health. And this is historic, and we are just, I call it gold. It's like holding gold in your hand. And it is our national accreditation, Public Health Accreditation Board Accreditation Committee, Blackhawk County Health Department, Waterloo, Iowa, accredited March 9, 2022, for five years, and we meet the national standards of public health department's performance. This is the first in the history of the department that we have received this. And so, we are very, very proud, on behalf of the board, very, very proud of the staff, and appreciate all the work and all the efforts that went into them. So, we wanted to share this with you.
Glad you did. Well, it's quite an achievement, and we're very proud also. So, it says a lot for Blackhawk County, so thank you. I know it was done during a pandemic too, which made it a little tougher.
Exactly. Thank you, Supervisor Leyland. I left that out. It was, yeah, it made it more challenging.
If someone you'd like to add to anything to that?
Thank you very much. You know, I have to say, when I first applied here, I didn't even know where Iowa was. You know, and I remember the board saying, "Do you know where you're coming to?" And I said, "Uh, I think so," but you know, for me, it continues to be really a great experience, because it's not really the physical environment that makes home for me as an immigrant. It's the people and the community we serve. And one thing I have to say is how important representation matters. And you know, for me, seeing Dr. Reverend Mary Robinson on the board also was indicative of how, you know, diverse and welcoming the community is. And it encouraged me to be here, and the support of the staff has been incredible. And you know, for this success is really all their hard work. You know, I'm just, again, as I always say, very blessed to be in the position of leadership, but it's their day-to-day work that really is so important for the community. And all they do is they try to do their best, and so I'm very proud of them too. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public comments. Anybody in the audience that like to comment about anything other than what's on the agenda? Anyone online? Hearing none. We'll move on to claims and payments. Mr. Perry?
The total this week is $445,930.51, of which the E-911 Service Commission makes up $29,224, secondary roads $207,526, maintenance $34,618, and finally Sheriff's Department $10,001.06. Everything is normal.
Thank you, James. This is a resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a presentation by Mr. Bob Lincoln with Elevate, CCBHC. Good morning, Bob. How are you?
Yes, good morning. I'm well. Bob Lincoln, 217 West Fourth Street, Waterloo, Iowa. It's a pleasure to be with you. Just to have a few comments and a few updates I want to provide to the board. First and foremost, May is Mental Health Month, and I think it's really a time to extend the celebration to the work of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors in their leadership in advancing mental health services in Iowa. So much has been accomplished over the last 20 years, and there's always been a commitment to serving those with most in need, and particularly those that are justice-involved. And that was in place long before I was able to be a part of that. And since then, again, the Blackhawk County Board has, through your humility and leadership and modeling, good government, you've really made a difference to people suffering with many behavioral health needs. So, my gratitude and my thanks to you for that. The second thing is I've got some exciting news. I don't know if you've kept up with our little shop at Elevate above the Screamin' Eagle, but we were recipient of a SAMPA grant that we've just finished this month, and now we're moving into our sustainability phase. And with the generous contribution of the Schwartz Foundation, we were able to purchase a building just across the street from you. And we've managed to tear it up, and now we're in the process of putting it back together. But what we're envisioning in this new location, the former Gallagher Law Office, is a welcome center, a welcome center to people who are in need of getting connected to recovery. The second piece is supported by the Gaming Commission that was generous enough to allow us to purchase the residential apartment adjoining the center. So, we'll be able to provide a continuum of alternatives for folks that are coming in and maybe need wraparound treatment, or maybe they need housing. We know in mental health, housing first is so important. If people don't have a stable environment, it's ridiculous to think that recovery can be achieved. So, we're very excited. And then, of course, the County Social Services, Mental Health and Disability Service Region is collaborating with us to make an additional investment in that setting, so we can provide what's called intensive residential support. And this is one of the most exciting services. This was a service that was envisioned in House File 2456. It's that last resort setting for those folks who have no other alternatives, those folks that are stuck in the hospital, those folks that are stuck in jail, or those folks that can only find the appropriate services out of state. We're going to try to figure out how we can wrap around the most intensive support to serve anybody, regardless of how complex their needs are. So, again, I'm just continue to be impressed and blessed by the collaboration of the community, our fellow community providers, our stakeholders, private foundations, and very excited to be able to bring this capacity to Blackhawk County and the surrounding area. The last thing I want to share with you is we have another little grant opportunity that Sheriff Thompson has been very generous to collaborate with us on. We're going to write a grant for expanded youth diversion. The Blackhawk County D cap Board has funded us to start the program. We now have two family coordinators that can go out and respond to youth and families that are struggling and at risk of getting involved with Protective Services or JCO, and see if we can't bring them the resources to divert that. My favorite definition of crisis comes from Dr. Beasley, who says that a crisis is a problem without the resources to address that. So, everybody's crisis is different, and having the flexibility to meet those resources, meet those needs, can really change lives. And so, again, we're very excited to have that capacity, and with the support of Blackhawk County, since this grant has to be written by a public entity, we hope to be able to provide that capacity to the whole region and be part of that welcoming center where we can, we don't want to be a diversion center. We don't want to focus on that. We want to have a more hopeful mission of welcoming people into recovery and onto the path of health and wellness. Unless you have any questions, those are all the remarks I had for this morning.
I'd just like to thank you, Bob, and Nafisa, you know, two great leaders in both your areas for getting things accomplished in Blackhawk County and making a better place for everybody to live and thrive.
Absolutely.
Now, it's a big time, like I was over talking to you the other day, some of the Vietnam vets that I've been talking to lately are struggling with health issues and with mental health issues. And as I spoke with you the other day, there's a lot of kids in schools that are having problems with, they were at home for such a long period of time, now they're back in a school setting, and they can't readjust for some reason. And it's kind of sad to see that. And hopefully, you guys working together will be able to get some stuff accomplished to keep this community together.
You bet.
Thanks again, Bob.
Thank you for recognizing the schools. They really do have a superhuman task now trying to get children back on track. And when I speak to them, again, it's keeping the teachers and the staff well and healthy. They're exhausted as our healthcare workers are coming through this pandemic. There was an interesting insight, what they saw with children, that the children with a lot of resources and a lot of skills and abilities actually excelled in this period, because they were granted some freedom and additional attention from their families. But the large group of folks that really relied on that structure have really been set back, like you said. So, yes, there's a lot of work. When there's a challenge, there's an opportunity, right?
Right. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
I do have questions for you, though.
Yes, oh, please. Please, absolutely.
Well, you mentioned, as far as the welcome center, I don't know if you touched on a date, when you expect that to be open?
Well, I've touched on several dates. Again, we were just, we've decided to, in our remodel, really focus on local reliable contractors that are going to be with us the long term. And so, it's really going to depend on their ability to schedule and get work done. We've started a full HVAC reinstallation, so I'm saying October 1st, and hopefully, we can be more aggressive as the pieces start coming together. What will be unique about this building, if you have a chance to look at it, is there's an alley, and so, we're going to have a dedicated entrance with dignity and welcoming entrance where law enforcement, our mobile crisis, or families can bring loved ones in in crisis, and we can do a wraparound and stabilize and help them transition. We've been modeling that in our clinic now. We've served nearly 200 individuals in the crisis setting, folks as young as 13 and 14. And what's been so powerful with this additional piece, and again, it's just a piece to all the other great work all of our providers do, is it allows that time for families to gather and for mental health professionals to put together a good plan. And so, even when we have to take folks to the hospital, we've been able to work with Unity Point and Mercy One to take them directly into the unit and avoid that waiting and being processed through the ED. And so, that's the model we're looking at building on, expanding at the welcome center.
That'd be great. You mentioned also the housing units. How many would you be able to have?
Yeah. Again, this is a building on, Joseph Yoder is the current owner, and he's very committed to recovery himself. And the apartments that he's rented, he's always given priority to folks that are a reentry or struggling to find housing, and we're going to continue that mission. We have 14, we have seven units on the second and the third floor, and then the IRSH, or the Intensive Residential Support Service Apartments, will be on the first floor. And then, we'll expand our peer support services as a storefront on the, on one side of the building.
Great. Sounds great. Well, I was going to ask you today too, about the crisis mobile response, how that was working, and for an update, if you don't mind?
Oh, I'd love, I could go on and on about that team. Jennifer Stevenson is our Mobile Crisis Director, and again, she comes to this with a lot of experience. She'd been doing crisis work through the Department of Human Services and Children for years. And so, when she had this opportunity to do it in a more expansive and sustainable way, she really grabbed hold. We have three teams on call 24/7. We have a South Team, a North Team, and an East Team, and they each cover four counties. And then, we've been able to embed two social workers with Waterloo PD, and going to shout out to Chief Fitzgerald and his leadership there, that he's really prepared his team to use our resources in the most effective way, and really identify those folks that are better served by a mobile crisis response than a law enforcement response. So, we are now averaging over 100. I think in March, we saw, in spring, we typically see an increase. In March, we saw over 130 calls throughout the region. Our response time in the metropolitan area is as quick as 20 minutes. And again, our one-call, YourLifeIowa, I should have that number, I should put that out every chance I can. Do you know that?
Yep, it is 855-51811.
All right. And there's a text number two that youth can text to, and then they dispatch a mobile crisis. And so, that is working, working very, very well. And the stories I could tell you, it's just, it's pretty remarkable that we're able to respond to folks. And again, so proud to be part of the first responder community, how accepting the fire department and EMS and the local EDs have been of our team and including us, and letting us add to their already incredible resources.
Great. Thank you. I was going to say, and really just add to what Craig said too, thank you. You've worked a long time and very hard to get this done and get to where we're at, so.
Lot of collaboration. Yeah. Congratulations to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Moving on to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. I want to give you an update on the outcome of our East Bennington Road Bridge Project meeting last Thursday evening in Dunkerton at the library there. We had about 15 people turn out for the meeting. The meeting lasted probably 90 minutes, and the vast majority of the people who attended, of course, would like us to keep the bridge open, repair the bridge, keep it open, either for ATVs or passenger traffic. They weren't necessarily focused on having the bridge support agricultural traffic at this time. So, at this time, I would like to pause and not ask you for a recommendation or make a decision at this time. In my tenure, this would be the first bridge that we are being, that we are thinking about or contemplating removing. I would like to pause and have my department come up with some criteria that would help us make these decisions in the future. You know, as we go forward and we're, all of us are facing decreasing funding, I feel like we need some better criteria to help us make these important decisions. So, I'm going to take several weeks and come back to you possibly by the end of June with some more definitive criteria that will help us with this decision, as well as future decisions of the same kind in the future. Can I answer any questions at this time?
If you just left that as for ATVs and stuff, how hard would that be to manage?
So, we did present information about the repair costs based on having a structural consultant look at the bridge several years ago. We are estimating the cost to replace one of the piers at $300,000. I don't know if that would be the extent of the, what it would take to repair this, to get it into condition to allow ATVs. I would say that's a minimum cost of $300,000. And I'm not, we could still look at that in the future. It's just that right now, I want to pause and reconsider some criteria for bridge replacements or bridge removals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Tralka?
I just want to commend Kathy and Brian for their professionalism and thoroughness in this presentation. The citizens truly appreciated it, and they did a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Tralka. Nafisa?
Hi, Nafisa Ebony, Blackhawk County Public Health. I just wanted to update the Board and inform them that we have an IT grant received, we received $393,741 that we need to spend by December 31st. And so, my plan is to schedule a series of meetings with Rory and Maintenance and Al, just to look at our infrastructure and, you know, how we can improve some of our IT-related needs. However, I'm concerned also about the timing of the ARP projects. You know, so that's going to be, what we do with IT is going to be based on what some of the solutions you all have for us in terms of how to move forward. So, but I do want to inform you all, those grant dollars need to be spent by December 31st of this year, and that's a lot of money that we can't not use. Yeah.
Nice opportunity.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nafisa. Anyone else? Any other department heads? Hearing none. Moving on to minutes approved for May 3rd, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both, motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the professional services proposal for IMEG Corporation, Brock Island, in the amount of $7,900 using federal American Recovery Plan funds for preliminary planning and engineering services for McFarland Park's epic system. Mike Hendrickson, Director of Conservation, the same has been approved by the Conservation Board. Mr. Hendrickson.
Second.
Moved in second.
Good morning, Board. Mike Hendrickson, Director of Blackhawk County Conservation. And I don't have a lot to say about this. I think these have been in the pipeline for quite some time. I'll preface all four of these things right out of the gate, and you'll have to hear it again. But I think due diligence has been done with these as far as our staff combing through the criteria for ARPA funds. I know it was sent to the committee. They took a hard look at it too. So, I do think with the process that's sitting in front of us right now, we have done everything that we should be doing, and these projects do fit ARPA. I will say that. So, with that, I'd entertain any questions that you have, but I just wanted to make that statement.
Questions for anyone?
I was just going to say, estimating that project was $60,000 initially. Is that correct?
It was in the area of, did we say?
Just close.
Yes. And this is for preliminary engineering.
Right.
This is going to get us up to see, try to understand what permitting process is involved and things like that, before we move any further.
I know you meant to do it a few weeks ago, so I apologize for that, but thank you for your patience.
Hearing no further questions. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Mr. Chair, we're going to have several of these, and usually I rotate the supervisors' names on the roll call, but just to make it easier, is it okay if I use just alphabetical?
Whatever, whatever you feel like, Mr. Veder.
Thank you very much. Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution, professional services proposal by IMEG Corporation, $10,000 using federal American Recovery Plan funds for the assessment, design plans, and final bid documents for Blackhawk Park Shower Building, as recommended by Mike Hendrickson, Director of Conservation.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Any questions for Mike?
This $250,000, I guess, I think, I went back in just my own mind, tried to remember the estimated cost.
Yeah, if the entire facility needed to be replaced, that would probably be worst-case scenario. We are not expecting that, and that's why we wanted an engineer to take a look at this. We think it's floor work, and so, it would be much less than that. But we were looking at worst-case scenario right out of the gate. And so, but again, we'll see what this engineer has to say.
Thank you.
So, a motion and a second on the floor. Hearing no further question. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution for the lowest responsible bid received from Hoagland Bus Company, Marshalltown, Iowa, for a purchase of a new mini bus with a bid of $99,944, with the additional safety and durability features included, for a total cost of $103,728, using FAMRP money, approved as recommended by Mike Hendrickson, Director of Conservation.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions for Mike? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution, that's the amendment number three, professional services contract with Origin Design, Dubuque, Iowa, for Cedar Valley Nature Trail, Blackhawk County, utilizing art money to include topographic survey of the Division II hydraulic analysis for Division II, and geotechnical analysis for structures on Division I and II, be approved, and Chair's sign saying, as recommended by Mike Hendrickson, Director of Conservation. Contract amount will be increased by $178,780 for an additional services, bringing the total amount of $428,780.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions for Mike?
Just quickly, just to clarify, they are, the engineers are moving into Division II. In other words, they've done their work with Division I, the southern end of the trail, the paving part of the trail. This is Division II, the upper 16 miles, coming from Evansdale South, and this is going to be basically more of the structural work on the bridges and things like that, but they're ready to go ahead and start that work.
An estimated total on this one was 5 million, I believe.
It was, that section of the trail, yeah. And for the actual engineering, it was about, it was about 570,000.
Is that working? No.
But that estimate has come down. That That original estimate on that section of trail was miscalculated as far as asphalt prices go, and when they got their true numbers, it did drop it significantly. It's, it's down in about the $4 million area to do the entire Division II project.
I was going to say, what is the next step, Mike, after this?
The, the next step would be, once, when they finish designing engineering for Division II, they would be ready to go out for bid and get those actual numbers, both for Division I and for Division II. So we would have a, we would have numbers for the entire trail by the, when they finish this work.
Okay, great. Well, I wanted to thank you and Sharie. There was a lot of paperwork I said involved with this that, and a lot of analyzing, I think, that you guys provided, so it was easy read, but a lot of reading.
Yeah. I think there is, there is a process, and what you're doing is, is, is going to work perfectly fine. And, and once you get into it, yeah, it's a lot of reading, but it works, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks very much.
Hearing no further question, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little? I'm sorry. Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White? Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution to approve the Blackhawk County Regulation entitled Lead-Based Paint Regulation, Chapter 8.30, Control of Lead-Based Paint that has been approved and adopted by Blackhawk County Board of Health. Morning again, Nafisa.
Morning. So I just want to briefly go over what were some of the changes. The Lead-Based Paint Regulation Analysis in front of you talks about that, but during a 2020 work session, the Blackhawk County Board of Health initiated a review of the existing Lead Source Hazard Regulation, one which had been in existence since 1988, and ultimately directed the development of a modern regulation that addressed contemporary concerns. And so one of the key components of the proposed Lead-Based Paint Regulation was, proposed regulation was written in current county regulation format and utilizes correct naming conventions, recommend that the regulation be recognized under the Title VIII Health and Safety Designation, specifically Chapter 8.30, and content changes, increased number of pertinent definitions, 30 definitions versus the previous 14, increased applicability, clear, clear guidelines on when and how to pursue assessments, robust lead hazard reduction requirements were updated, clear compliance and enforcement procedures, adoption of current Blackhawk County procedures for enforcement, additional protections for tenants, and updated regulatory language for hearings, variance requests, and for filing of injections. So we really worked hard to update that, and I have to applaud, it's really the environmental health team that reviewed, and they also looked at other updated lead ordinances to make sure that we were also in alignment. Jared, is there anything you want to add? Jared?
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Very good. I just, yeah, I'd like to thank the team, the environmental health team put in what amounted to be over years of work, really revising this, and when we talked about it being a revision, it really was kind of starting from the ground up. So, yeah, we'd like to thank, you know, the Board of Health for giving us some guidance on this and kind of pointing us in the right direction, and hopefully this is the first of many ordinances to come that we're updating and reviewing, making sure that they're, they're modern for, for the county of Blackhawk. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
I'll share with you all, there was a lot of he's in the previous regulation, but we all know it could be she's, too. Just FYI, or other pronouns.
1980s.
Any further questions for Nafisa? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Yeah, we don't have a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
I seconded.
You seconded it? Okay, thank you. Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution at the General Assistance Agreements with a 0% increase between Blackhawk County and Eastside Ministerial Alliance, Jesse Cosby Neighborhood Center and Operation Threshold to establish requirements that each agency shall comply with to be entitled to allocate designated funds to eligible Blackhawk County residents applying for shelter and energy assistance effective July 1, 2022, be approved, Director Chair to sign for same as recommended by Colleen Schiffer, General Assistance Coordinator. Good morning, Colleen.
Good morning, Colleen, General Assistance. I just want to continue to thank the agencies for what they do each and every day to distribute the funds for shelter and utility assistance. They continue to do a heck of a job, just like they always have. The only reason I'm requesting the 0% increase is just because our numbers are down substantially just because of all the federal funds available. With all the policy changes we're making July 1st, the numbers will go up because a lot of the federal funds are starting to diminish also, so just wanted to continue to thank them. Any questions?
No.
Any questions for hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Is that you, Dan?
Yeah. That's me.
Okay. Moved in second, and with no further discussion, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Tralka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a motion that the personnel requisition for an office specialist full-time replacement with a start date no sooner than May 16th in the County Treasurer's Office be approved as recommended by Rita Schmidt, County Treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion that the appointment of Heather Pendergast, Assistant Blackhawk County Attorney, effective May 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, be approved and Director Chair to sign for same as recommended by Brian Williams, Blackhawk County Attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next, the resolution that the policy revision to the travel authorization and reimbursement policy be approved as recommended by the Policy Review Committee. Good morning, Amanda.
Second.
Moved in second. Go ahead, Amanda.
Good morning, Amanda Fezremar, Human Resources Director, and I currently service the Chair of the Policy Review Committee. So our committee met recently to review, we hadn't met in quite some time, in my first year as the HR Director, we had not met, so starting to get the group back together to go over the long list of policies that we have, and this was the first few that we looked at, and the travel authorization and reimbursement policy that was, came about the changes due to law changes at the state level with regards to lodging facilities that have to be certified in human trafficking. So I can kind of go over each of these as they come up briefly, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions for Amanda on this one? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution for that the policy revision to the building and grounds be approved as recommended by Policy Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead, Amanda.
Again, just another tweaking here in regards to a law change that occurred, I believe, last year, so we'll be updating signage throughout the facilities, in particular with the court, or, yeah, courthouse, so.
Any questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution that the policy revision to the insurance policy be approved effective July 1, 2022, as recommended by the Policy Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Anything to add, Amanda?
Sure, so this is changing the enrollment waiting periods for new hires as well as for current employees as they leave employment with the county, so we are wanting to align this to kind of the best practices with new hires so that the waiting period is shortened. It currently is upwards of 90 days with a minimum waiting period of 60 days, and we're now lowering that to roughly 30 days. So this is a effort with recruiting that we're trying to tackle and identify areas that we can improve, I suppose, just based on the feedback that we've gotten from new hires as well as departments that have struggled with this area of insurance not being available in a, as timely manner as we could. So, and then on the other end of that is the, when employees leave, some of the feedback we've gotten from exit interviews is that staff feel that they have paid for insurance through the end of the month or through a certain time, but their insurance would end on their termination date. So again, just aligning this to be more reflective of best practices throughout the other cities and counties that we work alongside with, so, and that's the only real recommendation for that. And it would be effective July 1st, it does follow with our health insurance plan.
Thank you, Amanda.
Both those changes were made, mean?
Yes, yep. Historically, if we've made changes to insurance, we always just follow along with the, the plan year, so that'll be for the beginning of July 1st.
Any questions for Amanda? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Tralka?
I don't hear you.
She's got to turn on something.
Leyland?
Yes.
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution that the policy revision to the grant policy be approved as recommended by the Policy Review Committee.
So this is the grant administration policy, and if you have specific questions, I'm going to let our attorney, Mike Trynant, answer those, but just to summarize that we were trying to align this to federal, federal regulations language, there was some outdated language in this policy, and Mike did a nice job of going through it and just making some modifications to, to update that, so no major tweaking that I can recall.
No, this was a well-written policy. Simple fact of the matter is that over time, federal regulation changes certain thresholds, whether it be for bidding or for, for other purchases that you might make, and what we've done is we've made this policy so that it will move with the federal regulation instead of having to be changed every time there's a change in federal regulation.
Want to thank the committee for all their work and all this stuff, Amanda. Pass that on to everybody.
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
We plan to continue meeting on a more regular basis, so
That's good.
More things will be coming up to the Board, and as well as engaging the departments or possibly even staff, you know, it's like to get us on a schedule, and I think we're heading in the right direction, but I really appreciate the Board's support, especially on the insurance changes, and we'll just continue on with the policy review as we plan to meet more often, so.
Sounds good, thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
I think we need a motion, right? I'll make that motion.
Pardon me?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Next, the resolution to form the ARPA Committee responsible for the review of eligibility on proposed ARPA-funded projects and making recommendations to the Board of Supervisors as to such projects.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion?
Unless anybody wants to comment?
I'll comment quickly. This is, as the Board will recall from last week, Brandon Wendlin from the CLA commented that we should have multiple people looking at these things, reviewing them, and documenting a file for each ARPA project that's approved, and as to what the reasons for recommending approval were as to eligibility, this is to officially form that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Trynant. Any questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is discussion, possible Board action to appoint the following as members of the American Rescue Plan Act Committee, a county supervisor, finance director, the auditor, the accounting payroll manager in the county auditor's office, the accountant, county auditor's office, and assistant county attorney responsible for advising the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Trynant, you want to explain anything there?
Sure. So a few of us have been meeting to discuss formation of this committee, and recommendation was made based upon the different types of people who may logically have input on this. Obviously, finance and auditing, very important on this. I was asked by some to be a part of this, I think more because of, for compliance reasons, and I think it makes sense to have a board member on this committee as well because of the fact that this board is ultimately going to be deciding this, and typically we have one or two board members on committees who make recommendations to the board.
Well, I want to thank you for all of you that have been meeting, I guess, prior to making this an official committee, because I know you spent several hours and some time working on projects as the conservation and some of the others, too, so thank you for not waiting for the official vote to make it a, you know, official, I guess, committee. Now, I know that not, not the whole group's been meeting, not this whole group that you're proposing right now has been meeting, so you see some additional people that maybe should be added.
In addition to the group that's, that's been meeting, which includes James, as well as Billy Heath, Jen Todd, both of them with the county auditor's office, and myself, we would propose that, that Grant, the county auditor, be appointed to this committee as well as a supervisor, and I know that Chris Schwartz, for example, has indicated that he's willing to serve in this capacity.
I'd like to see it rotated, the supervisors, or at least maybe two.
And I think Tom mentioned that, too, didn't he? I was going to say, he's not here on today, but I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
My thoughts personally on, on having two supervisors to respond to your second suggestion first, Craig, is that I think that's fine, if two people want to be appointed to it. If we're doing a rotation, there could be some hiccups because I can see situations where, you know, things are going to have, you know, you're going to pick up from one meeting, from, from a prior meeting when you start your next meeting, and if we're always changing that person on the committee, that, I could see that becoming an issue. I also wonder if we wouldn't be in a situation where, you know, we would be kind of making sure one or another supervisor was going to show up each time rather than one being expected to by being appointed as his or herself.
Good point.
That is one of my questions, too, as far as attendance. The group will continue to meet even though some individuals maybe can't attend or miss a meeting and that type of thing, so that it doesn't get delayed, I guess I'm thinking process-wise.
Yeah, as long as we've got a quorum.
And your quorum will be then?
It would be, out of six people, it would be four. If we have seven, it would also be four.
I don't know what your thoughts are on this, but I said I like the rotation, like you're mentioning, because it gives everybody an opportunity, but I, I think, for me, that's answered by, if we just have one supervisor on, then any of us could sit in on a meeting if we wanted to and just alternate that way, or, you know, if it was a week you wanted to be or involved, or just that makes sense to me, too, that gives us an opportunity to all hear about it.
My thought was having the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board sit on it, but that was just my thought.
Well, it's, it's ultimately up to the Board how we do this, but these are public meetings, so of course anybody could attend.
Other than three of us.
Well, that creates an issue. You wouldn't be able to participate if you weren't actually on the committee, and yes, that can create some issues.
Well, would they be public meetings if we're not three of us in attendance?
They would be public meetings of the committee, yes, because the committee's a creature of the board.
So, what's the?
Dan, do you, yeah, Dan or Chris?
Dan or Chris?
I like the appointment of Chris, and then whichever one of us would like to attend as a secondary, we just, we do that, and if a third one shows up, when two are already there, that third one has to depart.
Like department head meetings.
And I'm certainly willing to serve on the committee, but I'm also open for a discussion on that, too. If I do serve, I'll give updates out of every meeting, I promise that.
What happens if you do, how are you, and maybe you haven't discussed this at all, too, I'm thinking, are you thinking you'll vote on these, like if there was ever some question about some of the projects, and it'll be a consensus?
Yes.
So if you have a group of four and you only have a two-two, something fails like we do in our?
I imagine that, I'd like to think most of these would end in a consensus, in that we would have discussions, like even if there was only one objection, we'd have discussions as to that objection, give that person an opportunity to perhaps sway others to agree with that objection, but having said that, ultimately, it's going to come down to a vote.
And then I assume that would be passed on to the board as far as what decisions are made at those times? Like today, it was the four were all unanimous, the three or four, you, however many, were all signed off.
Correct, and I would envision a situation where, since we anticipate there's going to be minutes taken at these meetings, I know there have been thus far, I would anticipate a situation where we would, you know, those would be available for the board to review, and the board would be available to the vote and the objections that were made.
Did we get copies of those minutes before? Like I said, you say there's been minutes taken, I'm not sure if we received minutes of those.
I don't know if they've, I'm not sure if they've been, if we've just circulated them among ourselves so far.
Yeah, and especially with the amount of time that we had just to get these four projects done and discussed, and I don't believe we did send those out. I think the explanation is really what we discussed, but moving forward, we can definitely send the minutes out and get that all taken care of, so that shouldn't be a problem. But going back, I mean, some of these projects are not going to have full consensus, but again, having the department head that filled the application out, have them kind of, you know, share their side of it, but at the end of the day, it's really just a recommendation anyway, so that's just, it falls on the board after that and go from there, so.
Yeah, that's, I like your recommendation. I think in the future, too, we should have those minutes before we vote, just so if we've got questions or discuss things with you.
Couple of days before we vote.
And I think that would be the idea, and most of the time, if we can't get that couple of days, I think the, unless there's something that make, you know, some kind of exigent circumstances, I would think we'd put it off till the following board meeting so that we give the board enough time to flesh through any questions.
Thank you, Mike.
Especially if there's a difference of opinion from the committee.
Right, yep, yep.
But most of these, most of us have been through anyway on the projects, and there was a lot of discussion on them, and they all seem to be worthwhile projects.
Yeah, I don't foresee any issues with the projects in Phase One or Phase Two. You know, those, they've really already been talked about, discussed, and further on approved. If there is an issue, obviously, those are going to be coming back to the board, and so there is that. It's just moving forward, really, that I see any potential. The big one I foresee on the docket would be the space assessment, whatever comes out of that, that we would then probably bring in, you know, different opinions and have that discussion at that point, so.
So have you discussed a process yet? Is that the process and how you're going to work through this, or how we are, or is that something you're still being discussed?
And I'm glad you asked that, because we have discussed a process, but at the same time, I expect those discussions to continue. For example, as we go through this, since the final ruling came out only recently, we're still getting up to speed on a lot of this, and when we talk about things like whether we should employ a consultant or not, you know, that's been brought up, we're going to have a meeting to discuss, or we're going to use part of a meeting to discuss that issue, for example, and what the role of that consultant could be, what, in addition to that, in this final guidance, we've learned that any project, a million dollars or more is going to require not only written justification, but that that written justification has to be prepared, at least in part, by an outside entity, and not only that, that you have to, in that written justification, compare at least three different alternatives and why you picked that among those three or more alternatives. So there's a lot of legwork that goes into having a properly documented file that shows that these were properly approved.
So how, that brings me to another question. We talked about about a hundred projects that we have on our list that have really received approval to go forward on, so how will those be handled? I would assume, especially the ones that we've expensed, would probably be fairly quickly, we need to get documentation and analyzing of those, as well as maybe some of the larger ones?
Yeah, you know, as discussed before, we're, you know, the Phase One and Phase Two, obviously, Phase One is going to be holding the highest priority, and so that one's going to be the ones that we're going to meet on a very quickly, in a very quick turnaround time. Brandon did say that anything that was already previously approved by the board does not technically have to, but again, that's going to be, I would want that decision from you guys in that direction.
You mean have to be approved again, or do you mean?
Correct.
Okay, but I think we'd need some kind of recognition at a meeting that they've received the data, and kind of maybe do it as a group or something, but say all of these projects and list them.
Right, so that's, yeah, that's the direction that I would like, is, you know, making sure that that part of the process is ironed out, and that's something that we can have a discussion on as a committee, but, yeah, it would really just prioritizing the projects that have already been approved and getting that to you as soon as possible, so.
Yeah, and I think it's time that, the lip service is done, and it's time to get to work on getting the projects done, because a lot of them fall right in line with what was discussed in other meetings on what, if, once we do this, this will be able to take place, once we do this, that'll be able to take place, things will move rapidly, and it'll show the public and the people working here and the agents, or the people that are from the Health Department and from the other departments that are involved, that we are making progress and getting the work done. Does that sound okay, Mike?
I think that's a fair statement, and I think with approval of the four conservation projects that had already been on items that I think were approved in prior phase approvals, we're getting, that's, you know, kind of getting the ball rolling on what you're saying there.
Right.
But there could be some that are in question if they don't have the criteria now, or something's changed that they maybe have to be removed, or we have to reconsider how they pay for them, or whatever.
Yes.
Yeah, that's kind of how I envisioned it, especially if, you know, let's say there's a split vote or anything, anything that's not unanimous, I would feel more comfortable having it come back to the board for a vote. I think that just makes sense, so.
Is it fair to you, I know you probably meet once or twice a week, you were talking about, to update the board, I guess, like for a while, at least at weekly meetings, that kind of where you're at or what the process will be and how you're working through the projects and that type of thing? Is that fair?
I think that makes sense.
It does.
That way, we're all kind of informed at the same time.
It does, we got, you know, there is a little bit of legwork that needs to be done, so, for instance, I don't know if next week would be great, but, you know, because we do need to get, we need to get that application ironed out, finalized, and then sent out to the department heads for them to fill out and send to the committee, so, I mean, depending on how fast that moves, that first process to kind of kick everything in gear, so I don't know about necessarily next week, it might be.
Too short a time.
Might be too short of a time, but weekly following.
I think that's one of those types of things that we probably need to be informed and see it, and I don't know if we have to approve it, but.
Yeah, because we don't want to be blindsided by something either.
I agree with that as well, and not only that, as mentioned before, we were still working on the process.
Right.
And so, you know, an initial report might be what we've, you know, some realizations we've come to as to the process, and whether we may, we may make some requests to the board concerning that process, whether it be an outside consultant's involvement, or whether it be something else, so.
I just don't want to delay what we're doing while we're considering that.
No.
Because we've got a lot of projects that we can't move forward on, then if we're going to be trying to.
Yeah, we're spinning our wheels right now, and it's, like I said, it's time to get some traction and get moving, and I think you should bring that back. I've heard enough talk about the consultant, either one way or another, what we want to do there, too, and get it on the docket so we can move forward and get things rolling.
All right. Our understanding was that the board's opinion last week, which was when that was first brought up, was that they wanted the committee to discuss the consultant, and so that is one of the first agenda items for the committee.
And you were going to look into that and get some multiple?
Yep, and I've been, I spoke with one, I have been playing phone tag with another, and so we are, we are in that process.
Thank you, Michael.
Yep.
Anything else on this? Any board action needed to be taken?
Yes.
Yes, we need a resolution, then, to appoint the following members of the American Rescue Act Committee, as stated, I think, is that work for?
I was thinking we did that one, sorry.
We'll need clarification.
Yeah, we will.
Do I have a motion or a second on this?
I'm still moved, I said, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I do have a question.
I think we need a clarification on who the supervisor would be.
I guess Mr. Chalka made that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine with Chris.
All right.
That's great.
Is this, I'd like to see everybody here for the meetings, so it'd be better communication that way.
I will, I will make a point to that, is if, I won't, I don't want any of these meetings held up in case we do have IT issues, and so if that is the case, I would prefer in-person meetings. I know the Policy Review Committee had an issue with just an IT hiccup, and so if at all possible, I would really prefer in-person meetings.
I would echo that.
It's always good.
With that said, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
I'd also like the record to show that I consent to my staff being appointed to this committee.
As well as yourself, or as well as yourself?
About yourself.
I consent to that, too.
You're comfortable with that?
Well, thank you, because we're going to need all of you, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Moving on, discussion possible board action, acceptance of Terry Road into Blackhawk County road system.
So moved.
Second.
Good morning again, board.
Good morning.
In late 2020, my office was approached by VJ Engineering that their client, Mr. Kevin Steege, would like to develop some property, some land, west of Taylor Road and south of Winslow Road in northwest Blackhawk County.
So is this a private lane, more or less, right now?
So this is a plat that was adopted, approved by Blackhawk County, I want to say twenty, twenty to thirty years ago, and it was approved, and Steege would like to, wanted at that time to put in approximately a dozen lots. It was planted already, there were a dozen lots, or approximately nine new lots that would be accessed by this, by Terry Road. Terry Road is approximately fifteen hundred foot long, it goes south of Winslow Road. Paul Arch can speak to you from VJ Engineering about the, some of the specifics about the road. I would like to say that Blackhawk County, we do have a subdivision, in our subdivision ordinance, chapter seventeen point one five, subdivision design standards, there are provisions in there, in the ordinance that do give a guidance to developers, contractors, that type of individual, that gives guidance on all streets or roads intended to be dedicated to public use and accepted into the county road system.
When was that put in place, Kathy?
This was...
Is that the one that we put in place because of Dunkerton, that deal in Dunkerton, or was that before that?
We, my office, we tweaked it and finalized it in July of 2019, and a portion of that was due to some pressure we were receiving from FEMA that we standardize our, some of our policies, so that when we do have emergency events, we are acting in accordance with our policies when we are seeking funds to rebuild our roadways here in the county. So, since 2019, we've had this updated policy. It does give very specific criteria, excuse me, about what the roads, what type of grade they should be built to, what the standard cross-section should look like, it gives guidance on Portland cement, concrete, asphalt, concrete pavements, and Paul can speak to you about that, but we do have guidance on, in our ordinance, subdivision ordinance policy. So I'll let, I'll turn it over to Paul Arch from VJ Engineering, he can speak to you about the process so far.
As Kathy mentioned, I'm Paul Arch with VJ Engineering.
Want to get that mic up your mouth? Thank you, so we can hear you.
Paul Arch with VJ Engineering, engineer record on the Mallory Farm subdivision. As Kathy mentioned, we worked from beginning of design through construction to adhere to the county's requirements for roadways, and I think that we adhere to all those, and at this point, we're just asking that this be accepted as a roadway in the county system. I've got a few slides, want to see current situation of the road out there, as is. Essentially, we worked and adhered to the county's requirements for typical section, materials, building process, all the way through construction, and I guess if anyone has some questions about specifics, I hope they can answer those, but I think we're.
How many houses, what were you talking, twelve?
What's that?
How many lots are there out there?
I believe there's twelve, there's four sold right now, already, so.
Already spoken four?
Yeah, they've already sold four.
So, depending on what we do, would that change the, change their idea of moving out there or building?
Yeah, hopefully, for the county system.
Would it, or?
I'm sorry.
Would that change their, could change their mind?
Oh, but the lots that are sold already?
Yeah.
No, I don't think that would change their mind.
Okay.
Looks like a nice room.
So what's your thoughts on this, Kathy?
Very nice. Well, we do have the ordinance. The ordinance does give guidance to developers that if they build this in standards, I believe we have an, that their expectation is that the county would accept this into the road system. I am recommending to you that we do accept it into the county road system. I've talked to maintenance about this, I've shared emails with you, we do expect this to be pretty low maintenance for at least fifteen to twenty years. You can see there's a beautiful, brand-new concrete pavement out there, six inches thick according to our standards. We've discussed drainage, ditch profiles with them, and they build it, Ryan and I have visited the site several times, they have done everything we've asked. I believe that we, I am recommending it to you, I believe that it is built according to our standards, and I would recommend that you accept it into the county road system. Can I answer any specific questions?
You mentioned sixteen hundred feet to plow, but really, all that would be in addition to, would take about ten to twenty minutes.
Right, so in speaking with our maintenance staff, we do have a truck that plows, a snow plow truck that plows Winslow Road. Of course, we need to plow this with a truck as well, it would just come off Winslow Road, it would probably take five to ten minutes, you know, in a normal snowfall. There may be some mowing, of course, as you know, we mow our paved road system about twice a year. I imagine many of the homeowners, once the homes get established, the grass will grow up right up to the rock you can see there, they will probably keep their, these yards mowed, but if they're not, we would, the mower would just go in and mow on the cul-de-sac. I'm thinking of this as similar to a Beaver Hills subdivision situation. I don't think we do a lot of summertime maintenance in that subdivision. In the winter, of course, we would be plowing both these routes. We do have, we would have a stop sign, and I'm, we may have a dead-end sign on this road as well, so very minimal signing requirements, that would be our responsibility, but other than that, it should be very minimal maintenance on our, the county's part.
Any thoughts, you have four sold and nine more to sell, is that what you thought?
There's twelve lots.
There are twelve, so eight, okay. Great.
Any further questions?
Looks like a great addition.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, I believe.
Yes.
To receive or approve this? Is that what it was, to approve it, or?
Yeah, it says accept it, except, acceptance of Terry Road, so, yeah.
But, there was a motion and a second, I don't know if you were in favor or against it.
Oh, no, I was in favor of it.
Okay, Mr. Chalka?
I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, make this a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Chalka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Any reports or information from the board? Oh, I do have one announcement, I almost forgot. Tomorrow morning is our 27th flight for Honor Flight. We have 80-some veterans going. I got an email last night that one of the gentlemen dropped something on his foot, broke his toe, so he's not sure whether he's going to be able to go, or, but hopefully, we can put him in a wheelchair and wheel him around to get him there, because even the time here left for some of us Vietnam vets isn't a long time, so want to get him to DC so they can, as I always put it, lay it down. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in a second.